Board of Trustees regular meeting is now called to order at four thirty one P M. We welcome you, members of the public, to our meeting. Instructions on making public comment are posted in item one of the agenda, and we will ask at each item if there is public comment. Catherine, will you please do roll call?
Absolutely, trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Iverson. Uh trustee Kishinev.
Here.
Trustee Reyes.
Here.
Trustee Baker.
Here.
I see trustee Deluna is absent.
Yeah, she'll be here, I think, in about twenty or thirty minutes. She's just running a tad late.
Okay, and trustee Dodd.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, we will move to the pledge of allegiance. Would our former student trustee Jorge Alejandro Martinez please lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just making sure you're staying on your toes, right? Okay, and we will move to our land acknowledgement. As we gather today, it is important to acknowledge that Napa Valley College and the surrounding Napa Valley sit on the unceded, traditional, ancestral, and contemporary homelands of the Miwok, Patwin, who are composed of three federally recognized tribes. The Kashiil Dhihi Band of Winton Indians of the Kalusa Indian Community, the Klezel Dhihi Band of Winton Indians, and the Yoka Dhihi Winton Nation, and Wapo, including the Michoacan Mapo, also known as the Onastis Peoples. As part of the college's mission of preparing students for evolving roles in a diverse, dynamic, and interdependent world, and in accordance with the college's values of honesty, integrity, inclusivity, and respect for others, we make this acknowledgement. We also affirm that this acknowledgement is insufficient. It does not undo the harm that has been and continues to be perpetrated against Indigenous people. The land and water may be hold steady in our commitment to be in solidarity and in action to seek equity and justice with the Miwok, Patwin, and Wapo people. We will now move to item two point four, adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to our agenda this evening? Seeing no eyeballs wandering my way, we will adopt the agenda by high consensus and move on to a resolution honoring our outgoing student trustee Jorge Alejandro Martinez. We have a resolution which I will summarize. And Jorge Alejandro Martinez was elected to student member of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees as a role in associate students of the college to bring positive change in the college community from June twenty-two to May twenty twenty-three. Jorge worked tirelessly in his advocacy for student success and thoughtful approach, especially during, this is not in here, during many times when our meetings conflicted with his class schedule. Jorge was a valued member of the Mesa Program, EOPS, and SS Trio. He was influential among his peers and demonstrated a strong desire to make an impact upon the world. His service as president of multiple student clubs on campus such as Mixed Martial Arts and Robotics, Enhanced Student Life, and a sense of community on campus. Jorge's dedication, inquiring mind, collegial work style, and diligent dedication to these issues as providing more scholarships to students and student diversity was tremendous value to the college and this district. Now, therefore, it results that we extend our great appreciation to our former student trustee Jorge Alejandro Martinez. And I would, I would welcome a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, trustee Olson, and thank you trustee Iverson for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I feel like there's a conflict of interest, you know, that, uh, I don't know. No, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. Motion for the resolution is passed unanimously. Thank you guys for being here, too. And we actually have another very fun affair swearing in of our new student trustee.
I will stand and run that in the way. Raise your right hand. Pete after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Giovanni Alejandro Martinez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I'll support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States of, uh.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States. You know, California, but that.
State of California. Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
To the United States.
And the Constitution.
And to Constitutions.
Of the State of California.
The State of California.
That I take this obligation.
That I will take this obligation.
Freely.
Freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of preservation.
And that I will well.
That I will.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge of the duties.
Into which.
Into which.
I am about to enter.
I will about to answer.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you to Jorge and Gio's family for being here. I think it really says a lot about his family that you have two, two really hardworking, incredible students that have really stepped up to become leaders in our campus and really, that all of us trust, trusting, we look forward to meeting you, Gio and Jorge. We've had a wonderful time working with you over the past year, but I do want to recognize your family because clearly they're doing something right. And so we thank you for letting your two boys be here and working and serving the district. Thank you. Thank you to you all. We will do another action item. It's our annual review and approval of privileges granted to our student trustee under B P twenty fifteen. We'll just open up the policy there, but if there, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, and I would welcome a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Privileges. Thank you trustee Baker for your motion.
Second.
And thank you trustee Reyes for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, unanimously approved with trustee Deluna absent. And we will go on to recognition of our associate students of Napa Valley College and Office of Recognition. Dr. G, would you mind, is it too early to do that now? Right. All right, okay.
Sorry about that. Hi, everyone. So if we haven't gotten a chance to meet, my name is Omar Pena. I'm a student affairs specialist here on campus and I've been taking along, or I've been doing a lot of the responsibilities for the manager of student life while our current manager of student life is on leave. So I've had, I know I don't have a lot of time, so I'll be super brief, but just wanted to say really congrats to the, to the previous board. And I've had the pleasure of working with them since September of this past semester. So we put this, these slides together of our previous board, everybody that participated. Some will be continuing. A little bit over half of our board is going to be transferring on, so we'll miss them, but you know, we wish them the best. And it really was a solid group. They all collaborated well, were student centric, and really easy to work with. So, yeah, I just want to congratulate them and thank you for, for providing them that, this recognition, too. Thank you.
And also, thank you very much to our ASMBC leaders, too. Know it. It's not necessarily a job that pays, but takes a lot of time. And so again, similar to our student trustees, we really appreciate your dedication to the district and making our campus a place where your students want to be. So thank you. And thank you to Omar for being here. We'll move to four point one, a recognition honoring our National Nurses Week. Since nineteen ninety, National Nurses Week is celebrated annually. May sixth is known as National Recognition Day for nurses, and May twelve is the birthday of Florence Nightingale, the founder of modern nursing. We have a resolution before the board tonight, and if there's any public comment on the resolution, I would welcome it now. Seeing none, we could take a motion for approval.
I'm moving.
Thank you trustee Kishinev. And thank you trustee Olson for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board approves the resolution unanimously with trustee Deluna absent. And then we will move on to Mr. Dunlap, who I see in the back, recognizing our outstanding Napa Valley College dorm athletes for this past academic year.
How are we all doing this afternoon?
Excellent.
Good, everybody good. Congratulations, congratulations. That's awesome. Want to thank the board, the athletic department, and Dr. Powell and distinguished others for giving us just a couple of minutes to recognize some of the athletic and academic accomplishments of our student athletes this past academic year. It's been quite a year, a lot of success. I thought this would be a good time to kind of show everyone what our student athletes are going to do after they're moving on here from Napa Valley College.
Next slide, please.
So academically, in the fall, we had a hundred and twelve student athletes in the fall of twenty-two. They completed twelve point one five academic units in the fall with an average GPA, GPA of three point oh. I believe we had forty-eight student athletes that received a three point oh or higher in the first semester. And then this spring semester, our current unit average is twelve point six, and the GPA is to be determined. What's great is coming next week. So they're doing excellent in the classroom. We want to thank Jeanette McClendon and Rodney Webster, their academic advisors as well. Next slide, please. So men's basketball, again, another successful year. We had Cameron Joseph, I believe, out of Vanden High School, committed to the University of Redlands last weekend, so that was exciting for us. Next slide. I'm going to go through this quickly because there's quite a few. Our women's basketball team, under coach DeBolt, had an incredible season. He has four girls moving on to play basketball next season. He has two others that are still uncommitted yet to where they may attend. A couple of them are out in the workforce and are making good money, so we're trying to prod them into moving on to get their four years, four-year degree. So we're really excited about this, especially Amari Bennett going to U C Merced. She's a local girl out of American Canyon. Next slide. All right, women's golf. Our women's golf team was incredible this year. They placed fifth in the state of California at the state championships this year, and Alexis Larson was a top ten finisher this fall. And she received a scholarship to Cal State East Bay. And then we have three other young ladies moving on to pursue their academic and athletic careers in golf as well. Next slide. Some of these are going to be updated because as of last week. So our men's golf program, last season we had Ryan Stewart go to Sonoma State. This year, we have a team of all freshmen. Coach Freski thought, man, I'm all, I'm young. Well, they took fourth in the state over the weekend, so that was extremely impressive. I know President Dodd got to go out there and play a little bit with them, and Marcus Nampi was the NorCal medalist, won first place in Norcalas.
I will take all credit, by the way.
Credit for that, awesome. And A.J. Tomassini tied for third at the state championship. Finished in the top six, but there was, and he shot a one forty over two days, so pretty impressive, sixty-seven on the first day. So men's golf, very successful, especially being all freshmen. Next slide, please. Baseball, there's a lot of kids moving on. Dan Parker's done an excellent job, and since we created this slide, one of our very own, Angel Cota, Georgina's son, has committed to Cal State East Bay. So very excited for all these young men that will moving on to play at the four-year level. I mean, they're going all over the place. Pikesville is in Kentucky, Cal Poly Pomona, Don's in Nebraska, Love it Christian, Sonoma State, USF, so very excited for what they're doing. Next slide, please. Men's soccer, won their fifth consecutive Bay Valley Conference Championship. Rahili Ochoa was coach of the year. And he had three young men move on and play, especially Marco Monzo at Cal State, Bakersfield Division One. Fort Hager's at Holy Names, which I think has disbanded their institution here recently, so he'll be moving on to play somewhere else. So we're really impressed with our soccer program and what they've been doing through the years. Next slide. All right, and then I believe this is our last slide, so Coach Paul DeBolt retired from Contra Costa College and moved up here a few years ago and really transformed our women's basketball program. He coached his thousandth community college basketball game this year. Only three people in the state of California have ever done that. He is the first in Northern California, and athletic department doesn't have excellent records, but as far back as we can go, we believe we won our first playoff game in history of Napa Valley College this year. So he's bringing in some really good athletes for next year. And again, academically, I forgot to mention Amari Bennett, who's going to U C Merced, was named to the academic all-state team this year. So very impressive with what they're doing on the court and in the classroom. And I believe that's it. But I want to thank you all for giving us a couple of minutes just to acknowledge the tremendous work of not just the athletes, but our coaches do a phenomenal job. Lauren Lee Farmer, our admin assistant, our athletic trainers, Brandon and Tracy, and Mike Ronald, our equipment manager, they work countless hours. I mean, they're there. I mean, Lauren's still working right now. I just left her, you know, going by. And Brandon, Tracy, they'll work two and twelve-hour days, no problem. So we really appreciate all the help, and we appreciate all the help from everybody in this room. So thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. And I, that's very much like you. I think the humble person you are to give, give credit to your coaches and our working trainers and staff and student, student athletes themselves, but certainly the leadership starts from, from the top. And you've been an excellent role model. I know, I don't know how many days off you've actually had probably in the last year, every single event. I, you'll go to in the weekend, you're there. I know you're in the concession stands to do and helping out with the fields. I just doing everything to, to help out the college and our student athletes and making sure that they're getting where they need to be, and clearly the numbers show that in terms of the academics and also where, where our student athletes are being able to transfer to, and also the, the credible coaches that were, were able to, to bring in Coach DeBolt, obviously being one of them. So thank you very much, Jerry. And we're moving on to our Phi Theta Kappa Awards. Unfortunately, Kathy Gillis couldn't be here to introduce her team because she's at the Puente Celebration right now. But I do have a note from her that I would like to read. "As always, the students of Phi Theta Kappa are extremely grateful for the support of the board and the wider college community. We want to give special thanks to Dr. Powell and trustee Iverson for their presence and words at Phi Theta Kappa Formal Inductions earlier this month. The students and their families were thrilled and honored to hear from and be personally congratulated by them. We're so proud of our students who achieve academic excellence despite their responsibilities and challenges. We look forward to working with the campus community to bring in exciting events to the college this fall. Congratulations to honor students Carrie Six and Clay Coyle, who were selected to represent Napa Valley College on the All California Academic Team, Academic Team, and were recognized by the CCLC." And thank you, Kathy, for your notice. Sorry to miss you. We will now move on to another very fun recognition introduced by Bob Vanderbilt, our Administrative Confidential Employee of the Year.
Thank you, trustee Dodd, members of the board. You know, there are superstars who are known by one name, Madonna, Cher, et cetera. And the winner of our Administrator Confidential of the Year is known by one name, and that is Solange. Solange Cottab. Solange is truly an unsung hero in our business finance office. She serves as executive assistant to Jim Reeves and is responsible for making him look good. So that's, that is in your job description. I've checked. It is definitely there. Her nominations came from all across the campus. She's done an incredible job working with recovery from our cyber attack and keeping the business services office moving. The nominations were moving and from lots of different people. One in particular I want to excerpt from, Solange consistently models the qualities of commitment and dedication to the best interests of the college. She's personable, service-focused, and often extends herself in support of businesses, of activities, and events outside of us and business administrative services. We know Solange to be the first to acknowledge birthdays and anniversaries and other events that contribute to an engaging and spirited esprit de corps. Her work habits and commitment further enhance the effect of business services as she seeks to get it right in her work with and for students, faculty, staff, committee members, and other stakeholders. It is my pleasure to allow her an opportunity to say hi and share the microphone with Solange. Congratulations.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you to those who nominated me. I am very grateful to be recognized and acknowledged for my efforts and to be working with such supportive colleagues. Prior to today's EOT meeting, I had shared with those who congratulate me of when I first worked as a part-time hourly in admissions and records many years ago, about a very wise coworker who trained me in customer service and shared a model to me. Always go the extra mile with a smile. After all these years, that is the model I still hold near and dear whenever I'm on campus and helping others. Thank you again for this recognition.
I would also like to note that Solange's husband and her mom is here, so thank you for sharing her with us.
I'm not sure if Jim wants to add anything else. I'll say, I'll say briefly, I just appreciate, you know, you stepping into this role and the spaces that you have, the things that you've done in this transition period in your leadership and assistance during this transition period for the college. So I'm sure Jim probably has a few thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. I, I would add, everything has been said squared. She, Solange has been a terrific asset to the institution and certainly to business and finance. She makes me look better than I should, and I'll share with you, I started on February fourteenth of last year. I'm not sure I would have made it to March fourteenth of last year had it not been for Solange. Solange, thank you. It is a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Solange, too. We have board resolutions honoring the important contributions of the various Napa Valley College employees that are retiring this year. So we'd like to acknowledge them. We are going to be doing so at a campus celebration on May twenty-third at five P M, right over there in the courtyard. But I think it would be very important for the board to approve the resolutions before us tonight, honoring Janice Ankman, Maria Biddenbach, Diana Shabody, Janet Duffy, Rebecca Gonzalez, Stacy Hitchcock, Heidi Jacks, Dixie Larson, Mark Martin, Robert Malley, Patty Morgan, who I'm the only number I'm going to call out because she is the most senior, thirty-five and a half years. I'll continue to do that and embarrass her, and, and Mark Austin, Josephine Stube, Francine Turner. Is there any public comment for the resolutions before the board tonight honoring these individuals? I have not received anything either, so I welcome a motion for approval.
I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve this.
Thank you very much, trustee Kishinev.
Second.
Thank you trustee Reyes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolutions are adopted unanimously, and hopefully we can, the board will stick around to sign those tonight, so we can get them to our retirees on May twenty-third at our celebration. Another fun item that we have tonight, item four point six, is granting of emeritus status. Under Board Policy thirty-one oh one, emeritus status is an honorary title awarded to recognize the distinguished and honorable service of retirees and to encourage continued association with the college. Emeritus status may be granted to qualified academic, classified, and administrative staff who have served the college for ten years after leaving the district. The president's office recommends that the board grant emeritus status to the following individuals. Janice Ankman, Janet Duffy, Mark Martin, Diane Van Duzen, Maria Biddenbach, Rebecca Gonzalez, Robert Malley, Nadine Grabett, Diana Shabody, Stephen Krebs, and Patty Morgan. Do we have any public comment, Catherine, on this item? I don't see anybody stepping to the podium. So I would welcome a motion to grant emeritus status to these individuals.
I'm moved.
Thank you trustee Deluna, and thank you trustee Olson for your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Emeritus status granted unanimously. This is almost like sensory overload, just like so much good, good stuff happening tonight. I wish we could like spread this out throughout the entire semester, but this is, let's bring it on. And we will move on to Dr. Schenk, Excellence in Student Service Award. Dr. G.
Yes, excellent. Well, it's, it's my honor to actually recognize two, two individuals. I have the privilege and, and honor really to be working closely with Floyd Martín del Campo, student affairs specialist in the EOPS Careca Works Department, and Georgina, Gina Cota, who works in counseling, the counseling department, is a counseling and service specialist. It's just, I think they are in Zulandia as well, I believe. Are they? They are listening. Okay, so, so I want to first just say with, I've worked closely with both, but with Gina Cota, particularly the last two years, very closely with, as she works in the counseling front office. And similar to, to the comments around Solange, if it were not for Gina Cota, who knows how long I would have lasted as the interim senior dean because she's had my back the entire time, and has been just an amazing, amazing team member. Gina has a long history at Napa Valley College, began Child Development Studies in this Child Development Center, working as a, as a teacher and working the front office of that space, and was doing amazing work over there, and then came over to counseling and has been doing work behind the scenes and, and also on the front lines. So her, her goal, her, her vision, I know what she, what she's been, what she does is she's really about being student-centered, being equity-focused, and making sure that students are seen and heard and validated. So to me, just seeing her in action, working with students on her front lines, literally making sure they get what they need to be successful. She really is the example of what student affairs professionals should be doing. And, and again, she's just, she's just a team player, always willing to step up, step in, and do what is needed to, to help us to be successful. So I really want to honor her and the amazing work she does. And I'm very, very proud of her and all of her accomplishments, and I look forward to many more years working closely with her. For Floyd Martín del Campo, I've known Floyd literally since her, she was probably a senior coming into, into the college as a, as a student, and met her early on, and again, somebody who, as a student at Napa Valley College, went through the EOPS program, was a Puente student, PTK, SSS Trio, and other, other programs. So she's, has been very involved as a student, then left, went to S F State, did her thing, came back as a, as a staff member, and has worked closely, again, on the front lines, making sure students get connected, get linked to Napa Valley College, and doing it in a very caring, compassionate way. She's again an example, somebody who goes above and beyond and makes sure students get what they need to be served, and is out there in the community doing work with the students who often get, or sometimes get missed. So the Spanish speakers, the integrated students, working at Valley, American Canyon, just really, really doing that important per lift for our community. So I'm just honored to be able to share space with them, to be able to, to, and build with them, and I know they're going to continue to make impacts in Napa Valley College. So thank you for all the work that you do, both Gina and Floyd, truly. Truly is, is an honor to say these words about you tonight.
You don't want to say any words? I hate to put our, our award recipients on, on the spot if they weren't anticipating, but.
Yeah, so Gina and Floyd, if you want to say a few words, you can.
Sorry to put you guys on the spot, but we, we really do want to recognize you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, very well.
Sorry, I was not, I'm doing, on Zoom, I do have some students, things that I have to take care of. We're taking students to a field trip tomorrow, so.
Dedicated.
Students first, right? No, it's just an honor just to also share this award with Gina, because I know Gina works very hard and she's also super student-centered. And it's just an honor to share this space with her and a lot of my colleagues, too, for nominating us as well. So, and I was just saying, you know, in another place that, you know, I don't see myself in every student. I was a student struggling, so I don't want our students to struggle like I did. So I just want to remind everyone that every little interaction that you have with the student, a prospect student, can make the difference. So that's how I do my work, so thank you again for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Floyd. Gina.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. I'm commuting home. I had to pick up kids, so I couldn't be there in person, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to everybody, everyone who voted me, my supervisors, my colleagues, my coworkers, my friends, my family. NBC is true. It's truly my home away from home and I hold it dearly, close to my heart. And students are really my focus. And, you know, everything that's been said, so I appreciate it. I am put on the spot, but thank you for the opportunity to speak and to say thank you again. And just what an honor to receive the award and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Gina. Thank you both, and thank you both for, for saying those words. It means a lot for the both of you to, to, to join us remotely with everything that you have going on, commitments to students, commitments to families. So thank you very much. We're, we're very happy to have you here and honored to recognize you this evening. We will enter that into, I do want to thank our, our committee to, to work together to make sure that we found great candidates for the Dr. Schenk Award. I know Trustee Kishner was one, so thank you, Trustee Kishner, for, for, for your efforts as well.
Actually, my reporters, I have an image with, with recognizing the, the committee and, and all the important work. So yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And we will move on to another fun recognition, the McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award. Dr. Mora.
Yes, it's my pleasure to talk about Professor Janet Stickman. Just briefly about the award and why she is the nominee this year and the award winner. The McPherson Award is the highest honor bestowed upon a faculty member each year in recognition of excellence in teaching. And among a number of outstanding nominees, Professor Janet Stickman was selected for the breadth and depth of her contributions to the students of Napa Valley College. She was honored at a very well-attended event on May fifth and several of the trustees attended. Thank you for doing that. And it's a pleasure to be able to recognize the reasons for that award. Very briefly, a former student wrote in one of the nomination letters, "The culture of learning established within the classroom sets clearly defined elevated expectations for all students. Professor Stickman can connect and communicate using a student-centered approach that fosters creativity, expression, leadership, and organization." And very briefly, a few highlights from some of her many achievements. She's been teaching for more than twenty-five years and has served as a professor of Humanities and Ethnic Studies at Napa Valley since two thousand and six. She established the Ethnic Studies Department and is the founding program coordinator of the Napa Valley College Cultural Center. She's also a founding member of the Emoja Learning Community, as well as helping to initiate the Casa Sayan Filipinex American Learning Community. In addition, she has helped to facilitate the Instructional Design Institute and the Culturally Responsive Pedagogy Workshop Series. Published author, poet, consultant, and mentor, Professor Janet Stickman.
Thank you so much, Dr. Mora. It truly is an honor to be the recipient of this award. I absolutely love the fact that I was nominated by dear colleagues and students of mine that know my work and know the impact of that work over the many years here at Napa Valley College. I'll try to keep this brief. I want to thank the Napa Valley College Foundation and the committee for organizing such a beautiful ceremony on the fourth. It was great having my family, friends, colleagues, and community members there to share this moment with me. And thank you to the board members that were present as well. And I must say that it was a rare occasion in life to be able to sit and listen to people openly share about how much my work has meant to them and how much my very being means to them. And so it was, it was so moving, it was so lovely, and such an honor. So thank you very much.
I just really quickly wanted to pile on a little bit because I wanted to let you know, Professor Stickman, that when I'm out and about in the community, I frequently hear about different professors, but your name is the one that I hear most frequently, in positive way. Including from past students, people that I talked to, the, oh, years and years ago, I took a class and, and they just wax on and on about how fantastic it was and how, how you opened their minds, which is why we're here. So thank you.
Yeah, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll piggyback on that, Professor Stickman. It was really, we hadn't known each other. I can imagine you're there. You hadn't, had an opportunity to meet since I've been on the board, but I was just so impressed and didn't know really a lot of, of your history. And it was, it was such a pleasure to be there and hear, as you mentioned, all the different, and it must have been a, a trip for you to hear other people kind of talk about you in that way. And it was, it was wonderful actually watching you and smiling and, and, and listening. But how many lives that you've touched from not just students, but your peers, faculty, other staff, even your, your couple mentors who came and flew, or came in and traveled from, from far, from far away to, to be there to support you, and actually how you touched them and helped them in, in their, in their achievements. And, and learning about all, all that, it's almost like, I think of it almost like a family tree of how everything that's going on at the campus is, I see, if you could originate back all these different roots, really a lot of things going on right now are a result of, it really begins with, with you, Professor Stickman. And so, you know, from Ethnic Studies to Emoja, I could go on and on with, with Dr. Mora already stated. But it was very cool, really humbling to, to be there. I was honored to be there as well. And, and thank you for all you, for all you do. So congratulations. And also thank you to our nominating committee, too, for McPherson, our distinguished award. And thank you to Trustee Olson as well, who sits on that committee. I know it takes a lot of work to, to go through all the, all the applications that you clearly identified an absolutely perfect candidate.
Well, there was a lot of really good nominations, but I have to say, Professor Stickman, yours stood out. And it was unanimous, our decision to nominate you. And it was a pleasure, the whole process of being on the nominating committee, reading the nominations from your colleagues and students. I'm just so impressed with your teaching style, what you've created at Napa Valley College, your list of publications. I, I, I saved them because I want to go and read them. I felt like being at the ceremony, I wanted to be a student of yours. So I, it was a lovely, lovely celebration. And to see, to hear just everyone, colleagues, students, family members, talk about the impact it had on their lives was really impressive.
Thank you, Trustee Olson. We will now move on to a public comment on closed session items. The board will devote a total of fifteen minutes regarding closed session items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment on closed session? Okay, the board will move into closed session covering conference with labor negotiators, public employee, employment, and pub, public employee performance evaluation. And the board will return at approximately six P M. And thank you, everyone, for being here. It's really nice to see you and, and, and I think a lot of fun for the board to, to honor everyone this evening and your families. You ready to go, Catherine? The board is back from closed session at approximately six oh eight P M. There is no announcements from closed session, but we will move on to an action item seven point two, Employment Agreement. And so I have to read out some, some legal language before the board takes action on this employment agreement. Prior to considering this matter as required by Government Code, Section fifty-four nine five three, subsection C three, I am providing an oral summary of the recommendation regarding the salary and fringe benefits under the proposed contract of educational administrator. The district is entering into an employment agreement with Alejandro Guerrero as Assistant Superintendent Vice President, Student Affairs, beginning May nineteen twenty twenty-three through May eighteen twenty twenty-six. And May, the Assistant Superintendent Vice President will receive a monthly salary at range three, step A, plus longevity increments one and two on the VP salary schedule, which is twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. He will advance on that salary schedule one step each subsequent January of this contract. Salary will be prorated for any partial month of service. The ASVP shall be entitled to receive the same benefits as the Administrative Confidential Employee Group. Congratulations, Dr. G.
Thank you.
I guess we got to approve, approve it too, right? I guess to, to, to formalize it, Catherine?
Okay, okay. I will let, let it stick a public comment first, but your motion will stay on the table.
Jessica, are you looking to make public comment?
You guys get along pretty good, so it shouldn't have been that bad. We have a motion from Trustee Iverson.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Baker, for your second all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. G, hired unanimously, employment agreement approved. Wonderful to have you. No, no surprises here, no surprises here, but glad there are no surprises. We will move on to a general public comment, which is an opportunity governed by the Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able under the Brown Act to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to the opportunity to gather this input. The board will devote up to fifteen minutes to review comment regarding any subject matter not appearing as an agenda item tonight, but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items, and each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. I have not received any public comment. Catherine, have you received any cards or is there any hands?
There is a hand raised, but she's not responding.
Okay, okay. Jessica.
Jessica, you're there?
Okay. Seeing none, seeing none of public comments, we will move to Agenda Item nine point one, a draft of our tentative mission, vision, and value statements. Is Dr. Warren all?
Here.
All right. Take your time. No, 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 please take your time.
Okay, good evening, board members. So as indicated in the description for this agenda item, a planning work group comprised of members of our Planning and Budget Committee has been engaged in developing draft mission, vision, and value statements this semester. And they've also been coordinating an inclusive process to collect input from the campus community. And I'll provide more details regarding the development process at the meeting next month, when the tentative draft, mission, vision, and value statements will come to you for action. So for tonight, this item is on the agenda to provide an opportunity to collect your input, reflections, and suggestions regarding the proposed tentative draft. We collected from, input from the campus community at a forum held earlier today. And the input collected earlier, plus the input that you provide now, will be shared at the Planning and Budget Committee meeting tomorrow, warning. And when that, when the committee takes action to formally recommend the tentative mission, vision, and value statements to the superintendent president based on the feedback that we've collected. So I'll just read through these really fast. So the mission, the proposed mission statement is, "Napa Valley College is a community of learners who believe in the transformative power of education. We are student-centered, equity-focused, and community-oriented in supporting the success of all students." The proposed vision is, "Napa Valley College cultivates a learning environment grounded in equity, inclusion, and empowerment." And the proposed values are inclusivity, integrity, respect, accountability, and growth. And so just to provide a little bit of information about the structure and purpose of each one of these, the mission reflects our current state. The vision is more inspirational and reflects the future state of the college. And the values indicate our expected behaviors that will help us achieve the mission and attain the vision. So this is, as I mentioned, the proposed tentative draft of the mission, vision, and value statements. Work on these will resume in the fall, when we will develop the final draft, and that will come to you for action sometime in the fall. And one thing to note is that the plan that will be developed in, or sorry, the, the plan is that in the fall, we'll develop more descriptive language around the value statements to clarify what we mean by each one. So that would, so this is the tentative draft that's a little leaner at this, at this point. So for now, I'm here to collect your reflections and input on the proposed tentative draft that's projected here.
Trustee Rios.
Just a, a comment. This isn't really a criticism, and I may be wrong as to how I understand this, but I thought of mission was a little more, more active, that it was, you know, kind of a, you know, do you know what I mean? Kind of what you aspire to do as opposed to, and you said it when, in your description, this is our, the state we're in. So I've always thought that it's something more, what we're, we're out there trying to do or accomplish.
Yeah, I think the, well, the, what we've used as a guide has been that the vision is the more inspirational piece to indicate where we're going. But I think that, well, the work, the work group had a lot of discussions around this. And I think that when we last reviewed our mission statement, we got a lot of input that they, folks wanted it to be more inspirational. And so that's why we waited and presented these as a package, so that you could reflect and provide input on all of them together.
Trustee Baker.
Yeah, I, my, my comment was somewhat similar. And again, it's not really necessarily a criticism. I was just trying to kind of follow the train of thought of the group that's been working on it is to, the move away from the more kind of nuts and bolts type mission, which we had before. I, I, I honestly feel like the previous mission got a little too much into the weeds, but like the very first statement about, you know, what we do. It doesn't, I don't really feel like the mission as it's proposed really says, it says who we are, but it doesn't say what we do. And so I'm wondering if that it was intentional or if it's still open for discussion.
Well, as I mentioned, this is the tentative, and we have an ongoing process that will continue into the fall. So this is not by any means the final word on it. And then I will convey the thoughts of the board as well. then I will, I convey, uh, the thoughts of the board, as well as the ones that were collected earlier today at the, uh, campus forum, uh, to the planning and budget committee.
The trustee, or? Go ahead, Dr. Powell, and then trustee Luna, do you want to follow?
But, okay. Um, thank you for the work that's been, um, put into this. I, I think I would love to see, um, some belonging language, um, where we, in our vision statement, and the way you said it, the, the future and what we want it to be is a belonging environment where everyone feels welcome. And I see that, you know, grounded in equity, inclusion, and empowerment. Um, I just, I guess I just want that one, if, if possible, to add a little more of the, of what it'll feel like, um, to be here and be part of this community. It would be great to see, but I appreciate the work that's gone into it.
Uh, just a little additional context to, uh, I think why maybe some of this is, is structured the way it is. Um, I know some initial discussions that I think we had here and, and, and I know had been had, uh, within the committee itself was making sure that, that all of these things were, um, not just kind of using actionable language and descriptive language, but also fairly memorable and wanting to, you know, opting for brevity for these things, so that the mission, vision, and value statements were things that collectively members of the campus community could potentially recite, you know, from, from memory. And so, uh, keeping it relatively lean, I think, was one of the objectives that I know the, uh, the planning committee had been discussing, you know, as one of the primary objectives for this, in addition to obviously being, you know, reflective of what, what we have is, uh, in terms of our values and what we saw. Um, just in terms of a next step for how we envision operationalizing some elements of whatever the final product of these are, um, you know, the mission, vision, and values will, will feature heavily into our subsequent institutional planning in the fall semester and our ed master plan, and most specifically in our institutional strategic plan. So we see them as more of a guidepost to help frame more specificity in our intentional and strategic planning in subsequent months. So, uh, if that helps with the context, but, uh, very helpful to, to get the feedback as it relates to having, uh, you know, something that's, that's more, uh, maybe action oriented.
Thank you, trustee Olson.
Um, yeah, I think, um, I think this is great. I, I love how simple it is, and, and I understand the brevity that, um, is wanted so that anyone can kind of memorize and share what our mission, vision, and values are. But I'm just wondering if, you know, because I, I feel like it's a little lean, especially the vision, um, and I, and I wonder if there's a way we can add more, but have it be sort of in a way that's a hierarchy of information, so that one sentence can be said, but then there's more information that really flushes out like the vision, like, you know, equity across the whole community, including teachers, students, staff, um, inclusion of who and empowerment to do what, like the little bit more information for each of those points. But maybe that can be sort of a second read or the next sentence that could again be this hierarchy of information that's posted and shared, but that we can also then all be, all have this just short, brief, um, statement that we, that we can remember, um, pretty easily. Maybe that's part of what happens in the value section is really fleshing out what those mean.
Yeah, and I would say, uh, the value section plus based on, um, feedback we've already collected from the, um, committee and then at the forum today is, um, not just fleshing out those values, but maybe have some kind of, um, additional descriptions, uh, um, around some of the wording in the mission and the vision. So, yeah, for instance, what does transformative mean to us? So it would be kind of a, um, I guess kind of a tiered approach where there'd be footnotes. We don't want to get to, um, make it too exhaustive, but you know, that they would be additional reference information following the three statements.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I'm generally, uh, in agreement, I think, with the rest of the board in terms that I, I appreciate, um, the direction of trustee Olson and trustee Baker and, and trustee Rios on that. And then, but also in the same, I'll give contradictory, uh, a piece of that is I do really appreciate the brevity and being able to go and I kind of look at this as also like an elevator speech, you know, tell me, you know, tell me what the college is and just get it out quick. And so what I, that's what I really do actually like that, and it, it's really all that words. Um, maybe it doesn't go into that level of detail, which I appreciate that detail, but I, I, it, it gets the right message across too. So I, so I want to be a complimentary in, in that regard. Please, trustee Olson.
So I think it's, um, maybe then as you're talking about this hierarchy or this, you know, footnotes, having that information as part of this so that we can be prepared if somebody says, what do you mean equity, inclusion, empowerment? Can you explain that? So having that information, maybe not in the mission and values or vision that gets, you know, posted and shared, but so that everybody really understands what these things mean and can talk to those points.
Yeah, and we've also talked about, uh, ha- having, um, some opportunities for engagement across the campus community. And so, for example, asking students during classes in the fall, what do these words mean to you, uh, right? So we can develop a common understanding and expectations, particularly around the values.
Really good idea. Um, Catherine, do we have any public comment on this? I know it's not an action item, but wanted to get the opportunity. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, we'll be back next month.
All right, see you then.
Okay, thanks.
We will go on to our consent calendar. We have, uh, requests for removal of item ten point eight, Flock Safety M O U. And outside of that, are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would welcome a motion to approve the remaining.
Make a motion to approve with the removal of ten point eight.
Thank you, trustee Luna.
Second.
Uh, thank you, trustee Rios, you're louder. Um, I could say, all, all, yeah, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? I consent, approved unanimously, um, for item ten point eight. Um, I see we have Chief Wade in the audience. Uh, would you, uh, mind, uh, discussing the, the Flock, uh, Safety M O U, please?
Were there specific questions or did you, would you like me just to kind of?
That's good, yeah, that's fair, fair, uh, fair question. Um, yeah, why don't we have, trustee Baker has a question. I know trustee Kishinev has a question too, so we'll go right and down.
Actually, I had two questions. Uh, first was it, it showed that there was no, um, uh, financial investment in joining this, the Flock system, but there was a, um, it was alluded to in the description that there would be the installation of two cameras, and I was just wondering where, how that was being funded, since it wasn't called out.
So, um, just joining, signing the M O U would give us access to other cameras. So that would, that would be no cost. If we did want to purchase cameras for the campus, then I believe it is three thousand dollars per camera per year.
So there aren't going to be any cameras added on campus, at least not at this time?
Currently, no. Uh, we are hoping with student housing coming with River Trail Village opening to have, uh, the hope was to start with two cameras up near the entrance and exit to that, and that would also encompass our traffic circle, so the main entry and exit to the campus.
The other thing I was curious about, and it may not be something that is, uh, until we were to add cameras, I don't know that it would matter, but, um, Benicia, City Benicia is a member of Flock, and one of the things that they have on their, um, police department page is a transparency dashboard, and I just was wondering if that is something that we would be looking into doing as well.
Absolutely, yes, I, I, that would be, uh, first and foremost, I believe.
Thank you, Chief Wade, uh, trustee Kishinev.
So I don't so much have a question as a statement. Uh, the memory, the memorandum of understanding on this says that these license plate collectors are not surveillance devices, and then no third parties can access our data. However, license plate reading software and, and databases that collect them are exactly surveillance. And the agreement doesn't allow third parties to activate, to, um, access to our data, but it, it doesn't, clearly doesn't classify law enforcement as third parties. Um, the company itself boasts on its website about working with law enforcement. Um, and so from one perspective, I'm concerned about, um, surveillance devices being used against activists and against immigrants and our data being used to go to immigration. And from another perspective, I'm concerned about our Fourth Amendment privacy rights, and the ongoing assault against our privacy, which has been going on for a while. Um, I cannot consent to installing surveillance devices on this campus. Fear and, and this vague safety have been used to erode our rights for years, and so I'm hoping that some of my colleagues will join me in voting against this, because I cannot consent to this. Thank you.
Can I clarify, um, some of those points that might answer some questions that come up? Um, so it, when we look at surveillance as a law enforcement idea, it is to monitor video, and these aren't being monitored. You actually have to look something up. So if you have some sort of a description, either it's a license plate or a vehicle description, then you would enter that into the system and it would bring up that information. There's no way for us to bring up, um, video footage for a certain amount of time. It's based on license plates or vehicle description or I also a bicycle description. As far as the release, we have to allow other law enforcement agencies to access the data. So it would be something that we would have to, they would, we would see, hey, they're requesting this information, and we would say, yes, you are allowed to access this information.
And all the reason for us not to have collected that information in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee, uh, do you mind trustee Rios, who we haven't heard from?
Yeah, so just, I've got a question, something I wanted to clarify, and, and a couple of these things cross my mind. There's always a, a concern about privacy and those things, but there's certainly, um, a deterrent effect that cameras have, uh, on crime, um, that I think is valuable. One of the things that I thought I read in the memo was that, and maybe I'm wrong how, the way I read it, but I thought it said that other agencies would have access to the cameras, to the actual, to, to be able to see through our cameras, or did I read that?
So it would be a search based. So if they entered, um, a vehicle description or a license plate, and that had been, uh, recorded within the cameras, then they could have access that this vehicle license plate entered our campus or crossed that camera at this time.
And that, so that doesn't come through you, through your office, they just do it?
Uh, yeah, but if we didn't open that up to them, if we didn't approve that agency, then no, they wouldn't have access to that.
Okay, so you approve the other agencies?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it is a, a request based. So we would approve, uh, like local agencies would be, obviously would be someone that we would consider, Napa P D, Napa Police Department, American Canyon Police Department.
Thank you. Trustee Baker.
I just wanted to, um, ask or, or suggest, um, again, um, my only experience is with this is with City of Benicia, but City, the, the P D in Benicia has additional policy that was adopted by the city council, so that, that addresses, you know, how and, and when the, the information that's collected can be used, who it can be shared with. So it's, it, it's, that exists outside of the M O U. And so I'm just wondering, you know, would we be, uh, does that already exist for us? Or would we need to develop that? Uh, you know, what's the plan for kind of shoring up to, that would address some of these questions?
Absolutely, we would develop our own policy. Um, some of it does exist, and you can see that on the transparency policies that are out there. Uh, one of the, the main things I have noticed when you log in, there's a big disclaimer that this is not to be used for any immigration services. Um, and Flock is, is very adamant about this is not to be used for, uh, anything based on protected class, personal reasons, and that sort of thing. When you do look up the, the information, you have to enter a case number, so it's associated with a crime you're investigating, or there is a hot list. So that would be something that's associated with, um, someone that might have a restraining order, and the protected party, um, they know the license plate of the, the person that is being protected against. So we would enter that in, and if that license plate came up, it would notify us that this person might possibly be on our campus. So those are the two. It's, it's for investigation purposes, and then also the prevention.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I did, that just, the thought, same thought crossed my mind too, would be helpful. I, I appreciate that, that Flock might have those policies, or, but when we get to that time, and I'm talking about also installing in cameras, it would be nice to have those policies in place, um, whether or not it's a, uh, Napa Valley College police, uh, policy or, uh, administrative policy. Um, it, it'd be nice, one, not to lose track of that and to have one in place, you know, when it, when it's, when it's time to do that, because I, one thing is rely on Flock, but let's maybe rely on ourselves to be the, our, our own filters of, of information. Um, so is there any public comment on this, uh, item, Catherine? Okay. Well, I would welcome a motion.
I'll move approval.
Thank you, trustee Baker. Thank you, trustee Iverson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Absolutely not.
Okay, board approves, uh, favor and, and opposition is trustee, uh, Kif, Kishinev voting no. We'll move on to item twelve point one, district initial proposal for negotiations with the College Faculty Association. Uh, there's a memo posted on board docs. Catherine, do we have any public comment on this item?
Sorry, no, we do not.
Okay. Until you know what the podium, we'll move to item twelve point two, College Faculty Association Proposal for Negotiations of a New Contract. And no public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Most of the trustees. We will go to thirteen point one, College and Career Access Pathways Agreement.
I'm so sorry.
What? Do we have public comment? No?
No, we do not.
Oh, what are you apologizing?
I was talking.
Oh. Okay, um, no public comment on, on this item. Are there any trustee comments or questions? Okay, I would welcome a motion for approval.
Of approval.
Thank you, trustee Baker and trustee Olson for your second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Board approves, uh, pathways agreement unanimously. Another action item fifteen point one, Chancellor's Office Financial, uh, Status Report, Quarterly Financial Status Report.
Thank you, trustee Dodd. Uh, this is the third quarter report, uh, concluding on May thirty first of, uh, twenty twenty three. It's gonna sound like a repeat of something you're gonna hear again in about ten minutes. Um, but we do want to put this before, uh, the board and the public about how we're doing relative to, uh, our budget, uh, both revenues and, and expenses. Section one is our unrestricted general fund revenue expenditures and fund balance. They align very, uh, they have aligned exactly with the reports I've been sharing with you throughout. We are, uh, on track generally, um, with revenues and expenses, and I'll, I'll give you an update on where we are on that in just a few minutes. Um, we, uh, our, our, section two is our annualized attendance, F T E S. Um, uh, those, uh, we're looking at thirty one ninety three. Uh, that number, uh, is, has not been confirmed yet, obviously, uh, but we anticipate, uh, that number will come in, uh, either at or maybe a little below that. Uh, total general fund cash balances, um, we're looking in, in certainly the end of the quarter of about eighteen point five million dollars in, in cash balances. And when you look at, uh, section four, the unrestricted general fund revenue expenditure, expenditures and fund balance, um, uh, I think trustee Olson will recognize these percentages. Um, in the far right column, they align very, very closely with our, our budget reports. So our unrestricted general fund, uh, revenues are totaling about sixty six point two percent. And remember, we're at the, the March is the third quarter, so that would be seventy five percent. So we are trending a little lower in revenues at seventy five percent of the year at that point. And then our unrestricted, um, our expenditures were a total of, uh, seventy percent. So at seventy five percent of the year expenditures was seventy percent. I'll share with you an update on the revenues and where we've done, uh, since then in just a moment. So, and our projected, uh, uh, percentage of fund balance to, um, to effectively our reserves is ten point three percent. That's what we're projecting. So that's the third quarter report. It is what we posted with the chancellor's office, uh, and it is out for public record and, and for your, uh, open for your questions or observations.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
I, I've not received any either. Any questions from trustees? Don't see any. I would welcome a motion.
To accept the report as presented?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Second. Can I just give him this one? Just trustee Iverson with the second. And this is actually sending it to the, to the chancellor's office and And so all trustees in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Quarterly status report is approved unanimously. Okay. We'll move on to general fund 11 update as of April 30.
Thank you, trustee Dodd. If you will crack that open, Catherine. This is a report that you're all very, I hope, very familiar with now. This is our fund 11. This is our unrestricted general fund. This is where the institution has latitude about how to use these funds. It's just a little primer. As a nonprofit, we have what's called a fund accounting system. So we at Napa Valley College have about five funds for various purposes. This is the unrestricted one. This is the one you see the most. This is the one that impacts us primarily in terms of our operations. Fund 12 are typically the restricted funds, the categorical funds, the grant funds. Those do impact us. However, those are typically, how we use those funds are prescribed by the grantee, by the categorical directives provided by the state and other providers. At our, at our final budget, we'll present all of those funds to give you more reasons to have blurry eyed over these numbers, but this is the important piece. And, and this is, the board determined some time ago, certainly prior to my arrival, that we wanted to push this in front of you monthly as opposed to quarterly. So just to keep you up to speed on where we are. Again, this is the unrestricted general fund. You'll notice we're 10 12ths of the way through the budget or 83%. So when you look at the far right column, you want to compare that generally speaking to 83% of the budget. Now, it's not always going to be exact because some expenses don't happen on a, in a very predicted, at a very predicted pace. And we certainly don't receive revenues each month that, that we measure. So you can measure it against, against how far into the year we are. So up to revenue, you'll notice that thanks to everyone who paid their property taxes, we did receive a nice bump in property tax revenue. So we're in about 98% of property tax revenue that we budgeted for. The delta there, the difference there between budgeted and realized thus far this year is about $1 million. So our total revenue to date is at about 96% of what we budgeted for. We saw a little bit of a drop off in, in our state funds for unrestricted purposes that are related to enrollments because of our enrollment decline. However, that's promising news at the end of April. We have two more months and we will see some, some additional apportionment funding coming in that we're entitled to. And I anticipate we'll see some trickle of property taxes coming in as well. Moving down, in terms of salaries, total salaries, we're trending at about 80%. Again, we're at 83% of the budget, we're 80% of our salaries and about 78% of our wages. So both were trending very close to where we should be. And I don't see any particular concerns there. Our total books and supplies are at 92%. 92 is a little high. The, the, the total amount budgeted isn't, isn't that large. It's about $395,000. This is one of those timing issues. I believe most of the expenditures have already occurred there after the remainder of the year. So I don't anticipate that there will be big bumps here and in expenditures through the remainder of the year. Though I have been surprised in the past. Onto total operating supplies is the next section down. We're at about 84% or generally on track and our capital outlays is 67%. The number you want to take a look at and keep an eye on is total expenditures or the blue line there. We're at about 79% of where we were against budget. Last year we were at 84%. And the other number you want to keep an eye on is the third number over to the right versus 545535. That says that we are, we are $545,000 better than we were last year. So that would contribute to our reserve, but if we stop the clock today, which would be a very positive sign. So in the end, we are, we're still trending very positively, even with the adjusted budget that you authorized in, in April. And, and so I still feel fairly confident. Finance guys never tell you they're for sure, but I have reasonable confidence that we'll finish the year and on a good, on a good track and we'll be able to make a contribution to the reserves at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Any questions or comments? Trustee Olson, trustee Baker? You guys always have very good questions.
I was just curious if you have, we're, so we're half a million in the blank right now, but we still have two more months. So I was wondering if you had any kind of guesstimate ballpark, what we might be able to put into reserve.
Could you repeat the question?
How much money we're going to have left?
You're asking the wrong guy. I think we're trending in a very positive direction. And you know that we did budget for a contribution. So whatever we're showing here would add on to that budget number. So that bodes, that bodes, bodes very well certainly on May the 18th. But again, you know, we still have two months and people in my shoes never like to make predictions like what will happen, but it looks very good.
And this includes the budget adjustment that we made, what was that in mid-March or February?
It does. Column E in the, in the schedule, the budget approved adjusted, the adjusted budget for 2023, it does include those.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Reeves. We will go on to our constituency reports. I know Priya Sharma, on behalf of ASNBC submitted her report, which is posted on board docs. And so we will move on to 16.3, classified senate report. Danielle Alexander, who is here. Wonderful to see you.
Thank you. Nice to see you too. Can, is this working?
Yes.
Okay. I have a few things to report. Since my last report, we, the classified professionals had our retreat. And it was in early April. I'm a little behind because I didn't go to the April meeting. But we had a really great retreat. I, we had about 50 people come, which I think was exceptional attendance. And we had a lot of excellent training and shared governance from the 4CS group. Several hours of, you know, with varying topics. And I think, I feel like our group was very engaged. Dr. Powell visited later in the afternoon. So that was nice. And we also had some community building activities, but mostly we were focused on shared governance, how to strengthen our senate, what participation can look like at a school where the senate is very developed. So I think that was really, really excellent. We're moving into an election period for senate right now. So we're currently taking nominations for several of the senator positions. And we've developed a calendar, an election calendar that's new and improved, I hope, through 2036 that will like stagger our executive board and our senators. So that hopefully there are always some experienced people that can teach new people and there will be less of a learning curve and during the transitions. I'm really hoping that that helps because our, well, I mean, our elections cycle has been off and then COVID really impacted that more. It got very disorganized. So we're on track with that. We're also working on editing and strengthening our senate bylaws, which are in real need of help. So we're working on that. And we, let's see, what is number four? I can't read my own writing. Oh yes, there it is. We completed, we created, I'm very bad at creating surveys, I've learned, but we did create a survey for, to survey our group about training and what training has occurred, what people have, you know, been involved in, what is wanted, what modalities people would like to learn through. And just kind of like interest level. And we've been having meetings with, I'm not sure how frequently, like every month or so, I think. We have a committee called staff development and training. And so Catherine and I meet with Charo and Michelle Bullock and we discuss training. And so we were able to share that survey data with Charo at that meeting. I think we had a great dialogue about that. So we're moving right along with training and getting people, you know, all kinds of skills they need for employment opportunity. Also just increasing success in work that's already been completed. Computer programs, equity, sorts of trainings. Just kind of a great variety. So that's in the hopper. And I'm in closing, just on behalf of our senate, I want to offer praise and thanks to all of our retirees and acknowledge the enormous contributions of our classified, our faculty and our administrators who are leaving. And I always lament the lost historical knowledge when people leave, but just excitement for the next steps. And, and personally, I will very much miss Bob Vanderbilt, my dean. So thank you. For being such a magnificent dean. We, we didn't want deans in biology. We're like, oh, deans. You know, division chairs. And then Bob came and we're like, yeah, deans. And so Bob changed. Bob changed us for the better. So thanks for all of your work. And that, that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. I know our classified association president is not present this evening. So we will move on to speak of the devil, Bob Vanderbilt.
Yeah. Wow. That's a, that's a tough one to follow. Thank you. President Dodd, members of the board, I bring you greetings from the Pointe celebration that is happening the other end of the campus. Our speaker, council member Narvaez asked me to pass on to president Dodd that if you move rapidly through the rest of this agenda and adjourn promptly, there may be a taco waiting for you at the other end of the campus. So yeah, I'll try to be brief as well. Thank you for the opportunity to report on the activities of administrative senate. If we could bring up a PDF, please. Catherine, thank you. And next, next one. So as I had mentioned earlier, Solange Kodo is the winner of the administrative confidential employee of the year. You had an opportunity to see her and her lovely family. Really pleased to send that award to her. This falls into the category of one sung hero award. She is the glue that has helped keep this campus together through some difficult challenges and her efforts are very much appreciated. Next picture, please. So I'm also pleased to report that the administrative senate was active in assisting with resolution of administrative procedure 2410 regarding how procedures are developed and rise, several of which have moved forward with through the council of presidents to a signing ceremony, including those signed by mutual agreement that covered curriculum, distance education, title line and enrollment priorities, all matters of great importance to our students. I gladly acknowledge my colleagues, Dr. Alvin Tchadha, Danielle Alexander, Priya Sharma and the council of presidents, without whom this work would not be possible, as well as the vice presidents, Jim McGowan, Catherine Moreno, who carry staffs who are engaged for the work group with us. This photo, after the signing of those administrative procedures, is proof that governance in action is once again three words, not two. The English professor in the room got the jokes. Thank you. Next picture, please. And so there are some things ahead of us in terms of policy and procedures, AP 2510, regarding governance. There are legal updates that need to be processed and there are other policies and procedures. And mutual gains with the administrative confidential group that are moving forward. And I'm optimistic will result in positive developments for all of us. Next. I want to mention that the considerable campus angst in recent years about our finances, COVID, enrollment and government's governance may lead to a misperception of anger. But in fact, that act comes from a place of love. Love for our mission of changing lives. Love for being an economic engine for our community. Love for our students and love for our community. As the great Daniel Webster said, and advocating successfully before the US Supreme Court in the Dartmouth College case in 1819, "It is, sir, as I have said, a small college." And yet there are those who love it. Which brings me to commencement, our next slide. That is the day in which we celebrate our love for the accomplishments of our students and for their families. As a graduation ceremony, it is also called commencement, as it marks for students the commencing of a new beginning. Commencing their career with a degree or a certificate, or commencing their work at a transfer institution for a bachelor's degree and perhaps beyond. As you know, in my case, it also marks the commencement because I'll be shortly commencing my new role as a retiring. I recently finished an online UC Davis course for court appointed mediators, as I may be doing some pro bono work in that area for the court. And I want to note that the UC Davis online course partially synchronous and partially asynchronous, a short term course. It's a format that is perfect for working professions. I like to do some teaching myself online or in person and I plan to remain in that and actively engage with our community. You can number me among those who love this small college. I'll see you next Thursday. I'll be the tall guy in black room.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderbilt. Don't see Dr. Tahada in the room and not in Zoom world. We will move on to 16.7, Faculty Association, Ms. Kristi Iwamoto.
Good evening, board. Good to see you. I got to run under the wire, didn't I? And Bob, glad to see you wore a jacket and aren't in the Hawaiian shirt, not carrying the Mai Tai yet. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to Dixie as well, who's wisely enjoyed her retirement party and then said, I'll see y'all later. But just loved working on the rogues gallery with you all. And I just actually, the reason I apologize for my lateness, I was on this side of the campus at the Jessamyn West writing contest reading. I was really excited and proud because two of my current students were awarded prizes tonight. So it was really exciting to be able to cheer them on. I, I did want to, to note that we, we have finished our general meetings for the year. So that's, was good. We were able to honor our, our faculty retirees there. And we also had our last CCA conference, the CCA CCA conference for the year. We went to Orange County where we had our award ceremony. The, we call them the WHO awards where we honor ours and everyone gets a little owl. Get it? And our award winner this year was our union treasurer, Michael Jean Vecchio. He's also in our math department. And so it was a well deserved prize for Michael for all the work he's done consulting on negotiations. We also had our faculty equity and diversity committee meeting and reception. And I'm sure trustee Baker will be happy to know we gave out banned books at our, as prizes for people that night. Something that I'm particularly proud of, that we were able to agree on in the last few weeks is we were able to agree on student consultation hours. And for those of you who have heard me complaining for the last, I don't know, four or five years about how part-time faculty do not have office hours, we for a long time argued, you know, complained because our part-time faculty had no office hours across the board. Well, we were luckily, and with some of the people in this room, able to achieve that. And this year we were actually even able to expand it. And so now we have even more, what we are calling student consultation hours for all of our part-time faculty. And we really think that this is a great achievement in equity for our students. Now, no matter whether they have a full-time professor or a part-time professor, they now have access to be able to meet with that professor in office hours. We have one more negotiation session, which is going to be next week because we're never done negotiating. Negotiations are always in progress. And I'm, thank you, I'm assuming you approved the, you looked at the sunshine letter and liked it. Yeah, we are actually opening our contract that we've, we've decided not to extend a year on our contract. We are opening up the contract next year. And I just have to admit, it's for a completely selfish reason because I'm kind of hoping to not be president anymore after next year. But it would be kind of a mean thing to leave a new incoming president who didn't have as much experience with a full contract review. So if you know anybody, please let me know. But I, anyone who wants to be union president, but I, I figure I'd like to have that wrapped up in the bulk of that work done over the next two. But I figure I'd like to have that wrapped up and the bulk of that work done over the next year. So negotiations are ongoing. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iwamoto. Move on to President and Cabinet Reports.
Catherine, would you mind pulling up the OA report? Thank you so much. So one thing just to highlight about my reports, I have made a commitment to keep this always to one page. So sometimes you'll see that student trick of weird margins. Anyway. So I wanted to give you an update about our enrollments. As VP Reeves referred to, our head count is greater than it was before. I wanted to point out on the first two bullets, if you look at the number of students attending MVC, that has increased slightly from spring of 2022, 3,917 versus 3,726. And the number of enrollments has also increased slightly. However, FTS is down, and you might say, hmm, that doesn't make sense. You will also notice from some prior reports that we have more dual enrollment students, which is a really positive development. Dual enrollment students typically take one class. So we have a greater number of students and a greater number of enrollments. But the total FTS is still lower this spring compared to last spring. So about 11% down. Another thing to note is that although spring semester is almost over, we have a number of classes which are positive attendance, which means that the apportionment or the FTS calculation is not based on the census date, but rather on the actual hours that the students attended. And that's a very small group of classes. However, positive attendance doesn't get recorded until the end of the semester. So you'll see a small change in the total FTS. This is not final. But it does give us a very good indication of where we were for spring semester. Summer is looking positive relative to last summer term. We have two sessions, a six-week term and an eight-week term. Those are starting on June 12th. So we are working actively and getting more marketing materials out there to encourage more people to enroll. Right now, we are up, you can see head counts are up, enrollments are up. We anticipate that FTS will also be up for summer 2023 relative to last year. Fall 2023 is very, very early. Priority registration began on May 2nd. And open registration begins on June 1st. That's for anyone, you don't have to be in any of the priority groups in order to select your classes. And classes begin on August 11th. I'm highlighting those dates perhaps for members of the public who are considering taking classes. We'd like to get more students started. We are trending slightly higher than fall of 2022, but you can see the numbers are very small right now because most of our enrollment is going to come much closer to August 11th. But we have 690 enrollments versus 561 at this same date last year. I wanted to mention, I tried to highlight areas that may have potential impacts for our college. So this month, mentioning AB 132, which includes its provisions for dual admission to CSU and UC. Dual admission not to be confused with dual enrollment. So dual admission, meaning that students who are applying to a CSU or UC campus can also be admitted to our college and take classes simultaneously, both at our campus and at the four-year institution. There are a number of details there that I don't think it's important to go into at the moment. But it's a very interesting area to look at to see what the impact might be. Predominantly, if students are choosing to take their general education courses with us, there could be some impact and some uptick in the general education classes specifically. This would not likely impact any other areas of our course offerings. So it's something to watch. And then wanted to highlight a couple of things for the remainder of the year, some which have already been mentioned. Last Friday night, my family and I went to the She Kills Monsters musical at the Black Box Theater in the PUC. And it is super funny and fun. And if you have teens, it's a really fun, teens who are older than 13. It's a really great show and just one of many wonderful events that have been held at the PAC this semester. And highlighting those on-campus events, I think, is really important and something that we really want to continue to support in the coming semester and year. And of course, you know, Student Affairs is doing such a great job of preparing us for commencement on May 25th. And I'm very excited to participate in my first Napa Valley College commencement ceremony. So I hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Well, you sent me right up, Dr. Mora. So thank you very much. If we can pull up my report. First off, I actually want to start off by just really saying how honored I am to be able to serve as the Assistant Superintendent, Vice President for Student Affairs, to be have chosen for this. For me, a very critical and important role in our community. So I wanted to just thank you for believing in me and for knowing that I can do this work. So I will pay it forward. I stand on the shoulders of many great people who came before me and my ancestors who really set this up for me, and I will do this for the next generation. So thank you again for selecting me, and I hope to make you proud. So good evening, everybody, and I am excited to be able to talk to you tonight about what Student Affairs is working on. And what we're really busy with right now is commencement. So we can go to, I should scroll down for me. And this year's commencement, you can keep straight to go, is again happening at Memorial Stadium a week from today. You will literally be on the stage. So looking forward to that, May 25th, from 6:00 to about 8:30 is where we're hoping to be done by 8:30 with our commencement. There is the address for you. I think you all know where the Memorial Stadium is at. We will be having a rehearsal that morning for our students. And for those of us who are participating, the actual commencement itself can come. And board members, you are more than welcome to join us if you'd like to participate in that rehearsal. But it gives us the opportunity to really go through all parts of the commencement ceremony and do it to make sure that we're on track with everything. You can go and scroll down. Just to provide for you some statistics around our graduates this year. So we are awarded 994 degrees and certificates for the academic year 2023. It's 589 unduplicated students. And you can see the breakdown there of the associate degrees, the transfer degrees, social science degrees, and a certificate. So we're proud of the work that we are all doing to make sure our students do get these degrees and certificates. And we, as of, as of 5:15, so a couple of days ago, we had 265 graduates who confirmed were attending. But that number just changes now to 74 who will be attending the ceremony. 200, around 221 graduates will attend the morning rehearsal. So again, that's a really important number for us to look at and to celebrate all the accomplishments. And this is a community effort for us to be able to get there. So we can scroll down. Also want to highlight for our commencement this year, we will have a keynote speaker, Dr. Gracila Rodriguez Garcia, who's an LCSW. She's an MVC alum in this. So one of my former students, somebody who's participated in Napa Valley College, she was an EOPS student, SSN Trio, Buendista. And she's been doing amazing work in the community as a clinical social worker, has a powerful story. I look forward for her to share her story with all of us. So she will be our keynote speaker. I also want to acknowledge Elani McAllister, who will be our Valence Community Speaker. Her story as well is very powerful, and I look forward to hearing her words. I'm going to scroll down. So just some general information around the commencement. The graduate check-in will begin at 4:30, so it's 4:30 to about 5:55. Do not wait till 5:55. If you're out in the community, listen to me, students, be there earlier. I highly recommend it so you can find parking and get situated where you can be. Doors will open at 4:30. Parking spaces will be available for MVC staff and for board members. For students, I do recommend that there as soon as you can, because there's, it does fill up. Six spaces will be available on the street and surrounding area. New this, it's pretty exciting. We're going to have a Jumbotron. We haven't had one before. So there'll be an opportunity for, can't wait for that. There'll be an opportunity for our families and community to see our students up close. And there's an image there of a Jumbotron and what that'll look like. So and the exciting thing about it is that we can use that as an opportunity for us to provide messages to our students prior to the ceremony. So staff and faculty and administration have put together messages that will go on that Jumbotron prior to the ceremony. And wanted to also talk about the, pretty quickly, the Dr. Ed Schenk, I mean, that's fine. Dr. Ed Schenk Excellence in Student Service Award, I mentioned earlier, from Medina de Campo in Dakota, recognized. I do want to thank our committee who helped us out in this. Trustee Ishneff was part of that committee. Our former trustee, Bruce Ketron, was also a participant in that. Marais Saint-Saint, one of our students, and Chief Wayne and myself were able to participate in that committee, which I believe was a good opportunity to select these individuals. And here are some features of the actual event that happened last week. And yeah, it was a celebration and a good time. So I wanted to lift up and recognize again for the, and Gina. We are having an end of the year celebration for all of our Student Affairs staff. They've been working extremely hard. Very proud of all their work on May 26th. We are all invited, board members, to participate in that. It will be from 12 to 2. There's a running joke from my staff, they give me a lot of favors, I owe them tacos. So we will have a Taco Bowl at this event. And again, please, please join us here for our celebration thereafter, our commencement ceremony, so I think next Friday. So looking forward to that opportunity to gather in community and celebrate during the semester. And that is my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Guerrero, and congratulations again on your promotion. Look forward to our continued work together. My report is not as graphically appealing as Dr. Guerrero's or not as efficient as Dr. Mora, so bear with me. We talked about the 2223 budget. I won't spend much time there. You will be expecting the 2324 interim, excuse me, interim budget at your meeting next, next month. So that's in process now. It goes tomorrow before the tentative budget. It goes before the Planning and Budget Committee for a recommendation to the President, so you can hear more about that soon. I wanted to focus a little bit on institutional technology. You have seen and approved several purchases of hardware, which are now in our possession. And we will be deploying shortly at the conclusion after this semester, so that we don't interrupt any classroom space. One of the other additions that you will be hearing more about is a commitment to advancing how we manage our IT services on campus. One of the challenges, a few of the challenges we've had here at Napa Valley historically is being able to attract the kind of talent that we need to take us in the direction we need to go and keeping that talent in place so that we have some level of continuity. So the solution that I've been looking at since IT was passed on to me is looking at a managed solution by a third party. And so I've looked at two recommendations. We're looking closely at one of them, to provide managed services with a chief information officer on campus full-time. And two specialized technicians available to us full-time. In addition to our current staff, so we will not be losing any current staff. But we will be able to enhance the ability of the institution to plan, to execute, and to anticipate the challenges before us in our IT area. And a great effort to avoid the kind of a challenge we faced last June with that cyber attack. So that has been inserted in the tentative budget, and it's still balanced that way so far. So we'll look forward to seeing and hearing more about that as we move to the budget stage for next year. On to our, what's the next area, Catherine? Our bookstore services, I'll remind you that Follett is in place now and they're moving through a transition. We don't anticipate any interruption of services to students as we transition. And again, we think that's a very positive sign, not only for students, but as we evolve into a campus that can serve students not only from eight to five, but from eight to 10, and better serve a residential community. Our student housing update, I walked the project today. It's very exciting to see what's going on. I think Trustee Iverson has kept a close eye on how many floors are in place. We have four floors on Building Three, three floors on Building Two. And it's coming out of off the foundation of Building One, so it's moving very quickly. In the June meeting, we have a very comprehensive review and report to you about how we're doing with that project. It's very exciting. It's moving along very nicely. That's the project that keeps me up at night in terms of hitting that deadline on August, in August of '24. And I would commend Dr. Mora for her good work in advancing the compressed calendar to not only for good curricular purposes, but certainly gives us another 15 minutes of breathing time on the construction schedule. Thank you, Dr. Mora. If you want to just click on that link, Catherine, again. And post our June meeting, we want to set up a meeting to walk you through the housing, student residential site, and give you a picture of what it looks like and what it feels like. Certainly, it's all wood now, but the accommodations that students will get are really quite remarkable. And I think you'll enjoy doing a walkthrough of that if you can squeeze in a little time. So that's a picture as of, I think, earlier today. And it's again, very exciting. And with that, just a facilities update, our swimming pool is back in action. We have, we have ordered new covers for the swimming pool with some incentive dollars. So we think we're moving along well there. We have some interested parties that Dr. Powell may share with you in his report. We want to look at the pool and how we use that. So things are looking very positive there. I will share with you that they may revise in the budget from the state. Is looking at continued reductions in this scheduled maintenance dollars. So we'll have more information for you on that. But it doesn't bode well for both instructional equipment and scheduled maintenance dollars coming to the institutions across the state. So with that, I would conclude my report.
Thank you to members of the President's Cabinet. I just have a few quick comments to share first and foremost. Dr. G, congratulations. It was an easy choice because, as I mentioned with the, with the board earlier, you know, I think the best predictor of future success is what you've been doing and being able to work with you as we started literally the same day. You know, seeing the approach that you bring to the job, the integrity that you bring to the position, the commitment to students, the commitment to equity, to community engagement, to overall success of our institution was clear. So congratulations. I'm really looking forward to working with you in the permanent role rather than taking the interim off the front of your title. So congratulations. I also just want to say congratulations to all of our award recipients and our retirees. And remind everyone again, as I noted several times, graduation is next week. This is really the highlight, I think, of the year for us, getting the chance to see the students cross the stage and participate and celebrate with them. So I look forward to seeing you all at graduation and to shaking a lot of students' hands as they cross that stage. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Powell. Standing Committee Reports, District Auxiliary Services Foundation.
No report.
Thank you, Trustee Elena. Viti Culture and Winery Foundation.
Yes, we met on the 10th. And there's, I think, a few things to note. And Mr. Reeves can correct me or add if I forget, as he is our leader there. So you may have noticed, if you're a member of the wine club, that you didn't receive any wine. There was supposed to be a May release, and that didn't happen. So I think in part that's due to the fact that the winery operations manager, Philip Murphy, has left. So the position is open. He was, he was the one in charge of getting that all together. He was the one in charge of getting that all together, including some other things. And I think it's something that we should look at because I think it's really going to affect the ability of the program, you know, to promote, not only promote and sell the wine, but do the other things like the wine club and everything else that he was working on. So I think that's a big loss to have that position open. And I think it's critical for the program and we should, we should look into to filling that position. Molly was, I don't know if she was really elected or just appointed as the VP of the Foundation to help Jim out. There's a projected loss in revenue, I think, over the next four years, four or five years, given the number of things that are happening, like the vineyard being pulled out and things like that. Shortage in grapes program, again, because the vineyard is in the process of being pulled out. But there are some people that were on the board and in the program that are out, and I think they've secured grapes. Maybe not all of them that they need yet, but secured, I think, maybe the majority of the tonnage that's needed for the program. Although that's at for a fee. If anybody knows people that have grapes that might be able to donate, that would be better. So I think the vineyard replanting is supposed to happen next fall, I believe. And Jim, am I forgetting anything else that?
I think that was a fine report, trustee Rios.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Rios. Our finance committee has nothing to report. I don't think anything from real property either. McPherson and Dr. Schenk awards had their moment earlier this meeting. And College Foundation, I don't have anything to report on behalf of the Foundation. Jim noted the Wine Spectator donation agreement. Do you have anything, Dr. Powell? Okay. Future agenda item request.
I have a request. I was approached by a couple of members of staff and asked about bilingual information regarding employment documents and regarding emergency information that goes out. Apparently, that's in the works but hasn't been put in place yet, and I'd like to have some kind of an update on that in the future.
So I didn't understand the filing of employment.
Apparently during the last emergency, some of the information, some of the emergency alert information that went out was only in English and some of the employment documents, I don't really know specifics without, you know, further conversations. Some of the, apparently, we have bilingual staff to speak Spanish or Tagalog again, and there's a request that some of their paperwork will be available in multiple languages.
Okay, yeah, sure.
We can provide an update on that. Thank you.
Trustee Baker.
I don't know if this is legal.
Am I completely legal?
I don't know. But I'm wondering if we could explore offering, because I know we have that the students from out of state pay at a different rate than internals, than California. I'm wondering if we could provide in-state rates for refugees from Florida.
Okay. Any other agenda item request? Okay. Trustee and Board Chair reports will move on to, actually, trustee Olson and move down the dais.
So besides the McPherson Distinguished Award celebration that I attended, that was really lovely. I also attended the classified appreciation party, which I thought, we did, we know how to put on parties here at the college. It was so wonderful. I loved helping next to Dr. G serve, you know, the attendees. My favorite part was watching Charo in her element. I loved seeing that side of you, Charo. It was just a really well, well-done event. And I'm looking forward to being part of other celebrations and ceremonies this month, especially my first graduation as a trustee. Thank you.
Trustee Iverson.
I was able to make it to the Phi Theta ceremony, and it was nice to be able to speak with Dr. Powell. Great group of students there, and I just love this time of year. So short report. Welcome, Dr. G officially.
Trustee Luna.
Thank you. Welcome. Again, congratulations. Very lucky to have you. Continue your role and your journey here at the college. I'm looking forward to seeing you grow even more in this position and beyond. I have had the pleasure, I guess, of, I mean, pleasure and honor and everything great to actually be helping teach a course here the last few weeks. It's the first-ever Spanish cert training in Napa County. My organization was able to get grant funding for that. We had, we have hopefully, I think, thirteen graduates on Saturday that will be presenting with their certificate and then forming our first Spanish group that will be able to respond during disasters or emergency situations when called upon. And the group is just amazing. It's been wonderful to be able to work with Joe Russo, who is a firefighter here in the city of Napa, Ricardo Juarez, who's with Latinos Unidos, who's now been cert trained to train, and Ken Arnold, our previous chief of police here for the college, and he's the leader of the Napa Valley Cert. So it's just been a wonderful, wonderful experience, seeing how these students are now connecting in the even broader and greater way for our community and for the benefit of our entire community is really inspiring to me. So not enough words to express how grateful I am to everybody who has helped make this happen. And we will be providing a second training, possibly a valley at some point before the end of the year. So I hope to have even more students there. And also, I'll be at the Napa County Resource Fair, the Valley College Campus tomorrow. I'm from four to seven. If anybody would like to come by and learn about disaster services and other resources we have in the county. And looking forward to graduation and also our birthday. Jennifer and I have a birthday next week. So if you want to remind everybody, if you want to say happy birthday, I'm this one, so we see you. We share the same birthday. So yeah, thank you so much and looking forward to seeing everybody at graduation.
Very cool. Thanks, trustee Luna. Trustee Baker.
Not a whole lot. Actually, just so many celebrations going on, and I unfortunately am not able to make it to most of them because I work in Benicia. Next Tuesday, I was there, I was like, oh, if I go in late, no, I can't do that because if I tried to make it to everything, I literally have to be in four places at once. And so I did get to go to the transfer celebration very briefly. And also I got to have lunch in the Glade for the E O P S end-of-year celebration. And we'll be going to the event tomorrow night, I think, and for Mesa. And then, and then we have tickets for She Kills Monsters with a bunch of thirteen-year-olds, so hopefully, that's okay. But and just again, if you haven't already thought about it, next meeting immediately after Grad Night, love to have you all volunteer. We can always use extra hands, and it is so much fun. So that's all I have.
Trustee Rios.
So I know there are a lot of celebrations going on, so I apologize. I mean, it's hard for me to run up and down the valley to attend these things, but I've been there in spirit. I did, was able to attend the E O P S celebration today because that was online. So I logged into that and listened and heard the stories. Students who have gone off and come back to tell everybody how they're doing, so that was wonderful. The other thing, I want to congratulate Dr. Guerrero. It just feels right. You know, I mean, you've been sitting there all this time. So I'm very happy that you have been officially hired into the position. That's all.
Trustee Kishneff.
I also attended the classified lunch with trustee Olson and served a classified staff lunch, which was an honor. I attended, on Earth Day, I attended the Earth Day event in American Canyon, which was great. And I ran into some Napa College staff there, which tested my blood sugar for me, which I was a little disappointed. I attended on May second, I attended the city council meeting in American Canyon to announce the commencement and some of the musical events like She Kills Monsters. I would like to continue doing that, but I may have scheduling issues in the future on Tuesdays. I don't know about that. On May eleventh, the Ed Schenk committee, we came up with our joint winners for that award, and we had a celebration. And I also attended the student art show on that same day, which was awesome. And a couple of days ago, I attended the Omoja Gala, which was great to celebrate the graduating Omoja students and the coming Omoja students. I would like to share congratulations to Dr. Guerrero. And I would like to extend a personal farewell to Jorge, which, who I've enjoyed working with in the last few months, and to Mr. Vanderwelt, whose comments I have thoroughly enjoyed in the short time I've been here, being regaled with humor and interesting information and comments proven by artificial intelligence. It's been, it's been a true pleasure, sir. And I think that will be it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kishneff, or student trustee.
Hello. I don't have anything to report, but I do want to say I am grateful to be here. And again, congratulations on your new promotion. And I'll be looking forward to working with you guys alongside in the future. So thank you.
Same with us. Yeah, I don't, not going to have much to report, but looking forward to celebrating next Thursday and very celebrations coming up. It's a good, good time of the year, best time of the year. So enjoying that, enjoying to see everybody next week. Announcements of future meetings, we, the board, has a retreat on June five, and our next regular meeting is June fifteen. There is a chance I may not actually be at the June fifteenth pending a work commitment that just came up. But I am trying to move it. And so, but just a heads up, trustee Luna. And if there is nothing else, the board will adjourn at seven-thirty P M. Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me, trustee Rios, yeah.
Yeah, just for our next meeting. I may be, I think I'll be here, but I may be late. I'm on jury duty, or I've been called for jury duty.
Poor guy.
You know, I'm off for that week, so.
Fair. Okay. Good to know.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.